Go gang. All right.
Okay. Called to order the meeting of the West Valley School Board, Special Board Meeting, August twenty third, twenty twenty three, four o'clock. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during the agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens, after identifying themselves, proceed to be cornered briefly as the subject comments. Basic rules and decorum are in effect at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when appropriate, including when statements are out of order, to make the breach of personal privacy rights, are abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a state business meeting conducted in a public forum. Okay, let's stand for the reasons.
I'm. Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Okay, so there's no request to speak, so we'll go right on to the action items. Consideration of eighth grade science teacher.
Should say resignation.
Uh, yeah, okay, there you go. How about resignation of eighth grade science teacher? Okay, so we have this resignation letter in the back of our beginning here. We need to have a motion to accept that resignation letter.
I will accept the resignation of Mark Vessler, the eighth grade science teacher. Second.
Um, any discussion? We're just glad you're sticking around. There's a lot of kids that are sorry to see you go. I know that.
Love that position. This will be, this will be an adventure, though, that's for sure.
Okay, any further comments? All those in favor? Uh, emotion.
Aye.
All this opposed. Pass unanimously. New hire recommendations. Um, Ms. Rush, new eighth grade science teacher now, um, do you want to address that, Tina, or, or are you? Do you want to address that, Mark? Um, the new science teacher.
Stacy Rush, so I think her uh, resume, so Jeff asked her for resume, he circulated, so hopefully the boards had a chance to look at resume. Definitely talked about going forward, given before you prove the final person, looking exactly where the, that person would place on the salary schedule in terms of years credited, so that, that we have years of experience and then years credited to the current max, my contract is eight years. And uh, and then what proposed salary would be, so that's what, that was the information the board got before the meeting. Cause it's just more informed approval, I think. Jeff, did you want to say anything on that?
Uh, yeah, um, from my, uh, the conversations, I guess we've had, I, I heard that she came, you know, very highly recommended from, um, at least from her prior principal position, uh, I don't recall where it was, it's not in Montana. Um, and from a pace standpoint, it seems like a little, a little above average, but it's, um, you know, it, it, I think we're lucky to get a good candidate at this point, um, in the year as well, so I, I, um, I think it sounded like from all sides, it seemed like a, a good hire.
Yeah, so she didn't. Here locally, is that my understanding?
She's been around, taught in Illinois and then did different types of work and is more recently looking back to going to teaching. So thirteen years teaching in Illinois, the same district. I was able to speak with her past principal, who's now their hiring director for their district. That was an experience, Richard and I watched large districts, twenty-two thousand kids in that district, but, um, um, so a long time teacher there, teaching earlier subjects, she student taught seventh grade science. She, um, is endorsed still in Illinois, uh, with learning behaviors, uh, reading, um, general elementary, science, language arts, and social science in the state of Montana, when they did the transfer of, um, her credits so far, she has, um, you know, her K eight endorsement and reading K twelve is where we're at right now, so is what her masters is in, reading K twelve. So, um, that's, that's been her experiences and she was just looking to go back to teaching, had some changes in her life and wanted to teach. I sent her the information ahead of time on what, um, the content for that class, what had been lined up before previously. She was confident about that, um.
So I'll be involved with the onboard, she's got sort of my packet of information to use for the orientation section and then really the eighth grade is gonna plan on using the same, uh, curriculum, um, going throughout the year, but to make sense, what's done at six and seven, and then, uh, the electors are really kind of up to her, I guess, right?
Yep, she still plans to do rocketry and talk with Allison today and looking forward to that, engineering could be in the engineering stem or project based, perhaps looking at science fair again, so.
Okay, and is there? We'll make a motion then for Stacy Rush to be the new eighth grade science teacher.
Second.
Yeah, okay.
Is there any discussion? In the discussion, uh, all those in favor, uh, did you rush the new eighth grade science teacher? Uh, I.
Aye.
I, anybody opposed?
Aye.
Okay, nobody opposed, so that's unanimous. Okay, and the second new hire recommendation is new food service clerk.
So that was originally a PBD when we did the agenda, and I think Richard probably has an update.
Yeah, so we were able to hire Ashley Hammer, that physician. She's applied for a couple of positions here before, but she seems like she's really excited to get on board and very educated person, so she'll jump in and learn very quickly.
She'll be taking over.
Her chair. Correct, yep. And we talked about, just to heads up, that, um, Brooke and I, about the title of this position, just because it, it's, uh, and it sounds like a kitchen position, but it's really not. So what we're gonna change it to in the future is, um, it basically an assistant secretary position like Myla, just they called them both the same thing, because they both work in the office there. I'm handling, you know, clerical things and administrative duties that way. So. Whereas mine is more of the attendance registrar, she's more of the, the accounts for food and all that stuff, so.
And so you change it to what now?
Assistant, assistant secretary. Yeah, so Brooke will be the district secretary. Then Myla's called an assistant secretary, we would just call her, so when we dial up her paperwork, that's what it's gonna say.
So two assistant secretaries and.
Yeah, we'll change everything except for her title. But we, um, got a lot of questions about that position, and who was asked about the kitchen, it's.
It means like it is.
Yeah, right.
So now it'll put where it actually is, as assistant secretary in the office.
Right, correct.
And I know Sherry was here for a long time, I mean, where do we come in budget wise, number wise, with Ashley versus?
Um, I think we agreed on sixteen, cause she has a bachelor's degree, so we're just north of sixteen dollars an hour.
Okay, and is that similar to where Sherry was, and are we over in that category?
No, I think Sherry was more. I'd somewhere looking here tonight, see you then.
And Sherry's gonna stay on to train.
To train.
For a few months or a few weeks.
Yeah, up to September fifteenth. That's.
Wow, yeah. Let me pull it up, it's not on the old thing. And that's Ashley Camer.
Yeah, yeah.
Camera, okay.
So I am just telling you, um, so where are we putting her then on the salary schedule? Under an assistant secretary, front lunch clerk, so she's gonna be here five years, so she'd be fourteen ninety-eight plus fifty cents, so she'd be, um, fifteen. Fourteen ninety-eight plus fifty cents, so.
Forty.
Fifteen forty-two.
Classy was, you said four or five years.
Yeah, with fi- at five years is fourteen ninety-eight, and then she's got the degrees, so she gets the fifty cents.
That's that bachelor's, equals fifty cents, right?
So what's your total? Or, or excuse me, fifteen forty-two. And then forty-eight, excuse me, gosh, I am tired, you guys, I apologize. For it. Um, and that comes in under what, where Sherry was at, so that's, that's good.
I will make a motion to hire Ashley Hammer for the new assistant secretary position. Second.
Is there any discussion? Right, was in favor of Ashley Hammer as assistant secretary? Um, I.
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 Aye.
Any, any, anybody opposed? Okay, unanimously. Now go on to see contract approvals, business manager, district clerk, we have copy of that. Agreement here. And that, and I think Jeff's been working with Mark on that.
Yeah. Well, now when we had the base salary, we talked about, Jeff, you're on the cover.
Sure, yeah, uh, so we got the, the template for the contract from Cindy, uh, it just kind of, the, the starting point was your last contract, I believe Cindy, and we just modified that for, obviously, for Mark, um, and just, I think the only kind of notable change really from the last contract we had with Cindy was obviously just related to pay and this being a partial year. I think the language on it, um, makes sense, the way we ended, you know, just noting this is the, this is the total dollar amount you're gonna get paid for the remaining fiscal year, which is only a partial, you know, of a full year, and then here's just to be clear, you know, on an annualized basis, on a full year basis, this is the equivalent wage, and I think that'll just make it easier for us to, um, renew this contract next year and just have everybody, you know, be on the same page, so, um, you know, we're all, I think we're all comfortable with the numbers, um, so if there's any questions, then um, we can answer those, if not, we, we could just, uh, have Marilyn request a motion.
You know, the only, you see there's a salary schedule on there, which is the same one that was used for, uh, Cindy, so effectively the base is what I'm making now, and then it would index out every year, um, and then that base would change consistent with whatever else happens.
And that's why the sixty thousand, she's not, not quite a whole year.
Right.
Sixty-one thousand.
Right.
How stupid.
Right, that's, that's like eleven months.
But you can see in the last seven.
Correct, yeah. And that, and like you said, Mark, that was the same, that was the same salary schedule that, that we had with Cindy, we didn't have a salary schedule with Cecilia, cause she was hourly, um, but we switched it to a salaried position with Mark, and so we had to pull that salary schedule back, you know, out of the, out of the dusty folder, so.
You call them archives, Jeff. The notes will reflect our. Or dusty ball.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion to accept the contract for the business manager, district clerk for Mark Vessler. Second.
I, is there any more discussion? I don't, was in favor of accepting the contract? I.
I. Aye.
Anybody opposed? It passed unanimously. I go on to approve of the two percent increase on the base for the classified staff.
This was included because we, when, when Cindy and I checked the notes, we didn't have any item on the board, uh, agendas or past meetings where we actually did that, and historically, where I understand it is, this classified staff gets the same, uh, increase that the, the certified staff. And so we finished that negotiation, and this was the CBA that you guys have all approved for the certified staff.
Right.
And so in order for me to issue contracts this week and next week, um, I have the salary schedule, um, for certified, I'm gonna put that in here. Yes, I'm sorry for classified.
The classified.
That what's in here, and this reflects the two percent, the board is being asked to approve that, so that, so that I can act on that for contracts this week.
And the numbers that we looked at previously, that was included in those.
Yes.
In the budget numbers, because historically, they usually always do the two percent with the year.
Right.
For the class.
Yeah.
And, um, we put it on the agenda just so that it is clear that it has been approved by the board.
Right.
Yeah, and your classified staff is not you. So they don't fall under that same CBA as your certified staffs.
No, no, and, and what about administration out there?
They're separate as well.
They, yeah, they get the two percent also, or not.
That wasn't, from what I heard, you guys had worked something out last year, so there was no two percent increase on the base for administrative.
Okay, um, but the certified class, or that now the classified will go up two percent like the certified.
Yeah.
On the base.
Gotcha.
And it's all, all of it, so we're.
All, all these, the, the budget numbers you'll hear tonight reflect two percent on everybody's.
Yes.
Salary.
Okay, that sounds good.
We'll make a motion of for the two percent for the classified staff, for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Second.
Right, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the two percent increase for the classified staff, I. I.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? They passed unanimously. Approval of Renaissance Accelerated Reader Program, um, they come. Is that what we've got in front of us here?
Yes, you have the character, I think.
Yeah.
Doctor.
We've got it in front of us here. So it ends, the end of August. Is, is this a, um, a computer program or?
Do you guys wanna talk to, I know it's very little.
Well, Richard can't. Talk about the summer.
Yeah, so basically, essentially, these are our benchfire programs that we have.
Oh.
We talked about it.
Okay, we can talk about, we just didn't talk about this, I mean, maybe we did, but I miss that particular guy.
Essentially, it allows us to monitor student progress, we do it at least three times a year.
Sure. And it's as mandated, mandated by the state that we have to have something like this.
Yep.
And is it, is it in the budget, this? Eleven thousand dollars.
It was a little late getting to us, but.
Twelve thousand.
It's, it's in there, so, yeah, it'd be better to catch this a couple of months earlier, classroom. If, if this is something to do every year.
Yeah, well, definitely will be done.
On it's only the ten thousand.
Yeah, so.
I approve of them, it's cause you.
Yeah, we will eventually, we'll talk a lot of fiscal control this year and approval limits on POs and anything ten thousand, anything that's five figures on it goes to the board, so you guys are gonna see those things regardless, that's policy advantage.
Like I, I should before, it's anything over ten thousand, we have to.
And where did it kind of put us faced on this last one?
We'll find it.
Does that mean we find it in reserves or?
There's no reserves, you're not going to reserve, let's, let's, let's forget, you heard of reserves until I get to it, no. We, uh, we will make sure this works, yeah, reserves, reserves are just not.
You and I are of the same mind, I just wanna make sure.
Bad cop, worst cop.
They may. That they have to do without something else because they have this, but this is a, this is a necessity as, as, you know.
Yeah.
For programs.
Okay, yeah. All right, I'll make a motion then to approve the Renaissance Accelerated Reader Program. Second.
All right, is there any discussion? I, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, passed unanimously. Okay, except for approved, the trustee's financial summary, cash balances, and, and FY twenty-four budget. Yes, and I want to be to at this outset, thanks Cindy and Stephanie and Jeff and Mark and Richard for all, and getting into all the time that we've spent going over this budget and making, putting it in order. They spend a lot of time and Cindy, uh, wonderful.
What I'm, what you're being presented with tonight has been, I can't say it's a labor of love anymore. I used to enjoy doing the TFS, I can't say that any longer, um, and, uh, but we made things work and made it balance, um, you were given the audit report, um, earlier, and so there were some adjustments within that audit report.
Yeah.
That needed to be made in the TFS because they were prior period revenue adjustments, prior period expenditure adjustments, um, due from other government, I mean, it, it was, she had fourteen entries that then we need to put in, and then they need to be offset in your balance sheet and whatnot, and so and it involved different funds, so got that done, and then there was just some coding things that were, uh, within the budget on some, um, revenue accounts and expenditure accounts, so, um, I had to go through that, but this trustee's financial summary, you'll see the balance sheets, and when we enter the numbers in here on the balance sheet, where you come out as your fund balance for, for the budget, you're gonna see on this apportionment of ending cash balances, this one page the county asked for, and so online course, I'm gonna talk to the general fund specifically, so if, if on page four of the TFS, you look on that balance sheet page and go down to line forty-eight, which is fund balance for budget. Okay, and for the general fund specifically, at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the fund balance came to two hundred and sixty-five thousand zero eight-two-point-six-nine. That is what your reserves are now in the general fund. I have not rea-, you don't reappropriate any of that money, and, um, the year before those reserves were sitting at, um.
It was four forty-five.
Yeah, they were at, uh, the reserves in the general fund were at four hundred and sixty thousand, seven eighty-five. And so, um, you can see that the difference is because we went to that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget amendment. Not all of that budget amendment was expended, thank goodness, and so a little got put back in. But one thing that is affecting this general fund budget are some of those prior period revenue and expenditure adjustments to the degree of about forty-two thousand dollars. So it changed where we would have been because of, of how they hit, and so the, the journal entries were made in the software as it, for that twenty-one, twenty-two school year, that they, they were made in the software, so that's reflected, and then we had to make them as well in the TFS to make everything, um, match up, so to speak. So as you go through this, um, balance sheet, it hits every fund that the district uses, including our extracurricular activities, which we call our boys and girls funds, and so those, those are reflective in our balance sheet as well. Uh, down to our claims and payroll funds, uh, clearing funds that we run through the county treasurer's office. And so there are multiple pages here of the balance sheet as it reflects to the different funds. The, um, and then the next section of the TFS, and again, it hits every fund, and that starts on page sixteen. Um, starts with your general fund, and it shows your revenues, uh, your expenditures, and then your changes and your fund balance. And so the general fund hits from page sixteen to nineteen. So, um, there was a nice change in revenue, but a lot of that has to do, um, there, and those revenue adjustments are reflected in here as well. So, uh, the revenue looks pretty good, and then the expenditures, they were, um, much higher than the revenue we brought in, but we had the reserves that we used and some fund balance. So the total expenditures that were shown there of five million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, five fifty-one, sixty-four, okay? Your revenues were five million, eighty-eight thousand dollars just over, and so, um, that shows where you, where you've used the difference in your revenue and your expenditures is that, um, budget amendment that we did. I think we did, so, um, so again, it shows an ending fund balance, but we have to use an ending cash balance, which is part of the balance sheet. So the ending cash balance that we use moving forward, um, for the budgets are the, um, two hundred and sixty-five, um, thousand dollars a year. And those.
Cindy, Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, so a large portion of that two hundred and sixty-five is held at the state level, right? If not, it wouldn't be sitting in our operating account.
No, it's sitting in, uh, the county treasurer's office specific to the general fund. And that money, uh, it is our money that is sitting there, and so that's your reserves as to your general fund, it's not at the state level, it's all local.
Okay, yeah, but it's not, it's, but we, we don't have, we don't have through the budgetary process, I guess I was just trying to point out that, that's not, that's not money that, again, it's, it's the cash that is our general fund reserves, it's not money to be, to be, you know, drawn down or spent, like that's, that, those are the reserves, yeah.
Correct, that's what you have in reserves this year, yep.
Yep, yep.
Yep, and what those reserves do for us and is that they help cover all the summer expenses that a district has through payroll or claims, and so we want, we have to have reserves, or you're, you're just not gonna be able to run a school. So, yeah, and our goal then, over the next few years, is to get those reserves back, built back up to a minimum of ten percent. Cause you're gonna need that moving forward, if you're gonna go to bond, and what standard insurers will wanna see in the district, so. So that takes you, and each fund will look the very same based upon your revenues, expenditures, um, and then, um, and they're summarized basically, um, through the balance sheet. But we take the numbers from the trustee's financial summary, and then we can move forward to then start building our FY twenty-four budget. Do you want to go through each fund, or do you want to, are you good, do you have specific questions?
Was there anything that stuck out on any of the specific funds to you as you went through it?
Um, the fund fifteen and these S R monies, and just with what the, um, looking at what the auditor had for changes in here.
What is?
Um, it's a miscellaneous fund fifteen, they call it, but it's a one-one-five fund that, um, any federal grants would go into, if you had specific donations to a classroom, they can go into the one-one-five, oftentimes it's referred to as miscellaneous one-one-five. And any of the money that comes in there, you assign a project refrigerator code to that identifies that money, and so you know all the different pots of money that make up that one-one-five fund. So when you look at this one-one-five fund, you're gonna see in the beginning, the, on revenues, where it says PRC, and then it's got, um, like, for instance. Um, like for instance, number fifty wellness incentive, so they receive five hundred dollars. Um, in other revenue from local sources for a wellness incentive. Okay, but any money that comes into the district in this fund is identified through a project reporter code, so. And then, those monies, when you have revenue or expenditures, you attach that project reporter code. So its own little account is tracked. But then all of those accounts make up your fund balance within that fund, okay? So we're gonna do a, a, a little deeper dive into some of these S R funds. And just do a little more tracking on those. I, I've found something that, OPI, that's gonna, um, help us with some of that. So we're just gonna take another deep dive on that one.
You're re-auditing yourself, kind of?
Um, well, we're, we're gonna re-audit, I would say, the S R two and S R three monies. And just make sure that because the S R two monies all have to be spent by September thirty. So while it's my understanding, while I've been told, they've all been expended. We wanna just double check and make sure, especially with all of these, um, adjustments the auditor wanted done, yeah.
How about those other two S R, S R two and three?
S R one was finished. S R two finishes this year, and I believe S R three goes till, uh, September thirty of twenty-four.
But as far as we know, we've spent.
Oh, they've changed it, okay. So, but those monies, it's my understanding, are gone, if there's any, it's very little.
But what you're gonna do is go back in and see.
Yeah, we're just gonna take another peek. Cause we get audited every year, and so, um, we just wanna make sure that. You know, we're there and we know, and if they see anything that they audit from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. That we're understanding what it is and can move forward with that. And it's, it's good for Mark to deep dive into some of this and just kinda get more of the background on it too. So.
And you guys have made the adjustments then from what they wanted for.
I have.
Prior year, okay.
I have.
And so, one of the things that was brought up at a previous meeting was part of why our audit was so expensive. Was exploring and auditing all of those S R funds that had been spent. And then it should be a bit cheaper, an audit, the audit should be a bit cheaper going forward.
Yeah, I don't know.
Uh, a portion, it, it, the audit was more expensive in part because we had to have that. You have to do, there's like different auto requirements specifically for those S R funds, so once, once we've exhausted those. You know, then we don't have to pay for that additional audit compliance, but that was only a portion of why it was more expensive. A larger piece was because of all the work that the audit firm did to research and. You know, discover all the necessary journal entry adjustments that had to be made to kinda right the ship, so to speak. And get everything coded and accounted for properly, so, so as long, as long as we can get. That consistently, you know, more accurately produced in the, in the future, we should have, you know, the, the audit expense come down. Just because we have cleaner books, um, going forward. Um, and then as, once those S R funds are exhausted, which I think they are, but I guess there was like some that maybe potentially we still have to pay for that additional audit expense. Um, this fiscal year.
I don't know, we'll, we'll take a look at that. Um, I know oftentimes with the auditors, we'll have a multi-year contract with them. And we get audited every year, so we'll, we'll know what that is. Um, and I know that a lot of districts, because of all this money and this S R money and it's federal in nature. Then that throws you into, it ups your threshold and it puts you into needing a federal audit. Which are more detailed and of course more expensive, and we were not in that prior to twenty-twenty. We did not have to have a federal audit, those, anything that was federal was included in our audit as a whole. It wasn't anything separate. And I do know from visiting with the auditor here in this last week, that there were two of them working on this at times.
Was part of that problem too Cindy, that, that two computer programs? That, that were trying to bout to kind of balance between, nothing, I didn't really.
No, it affected, um, the year twenty-twenty-one and entries that were made there.
Okay.
And then entries made in twenty-one, twenty-two, which that audit encompassed twenty-one, twenty-two. And so those adjustments are correcting some errors that were made in both of those years. And it was two different individuals working in those years. And so, like what I found in working with this, when it isn't your own work. It's kinda tough to track it down and drill it down and it, it just takes a lot of time.
And that's what the attitudes were coming up.
Yes.
Constantly.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, um, do we know if we're on like a three-year, I mean, is that something maybe if we are agreed to like a three-year? Maybe the cost does come down for us?
Generally, it doesn't. Uh, once the federal audit's out of there, it will, but on a, on a norm, they don't drop. They tend to, to go up each year. Yeah.
So I'm sure you know the advantage to sock it into a three-year then?
Well, we have, I mean, we've signed off of. I don't know what you're in right now.
No.
So, or when it was renewed, and, um, so, you know, you can go out to bid on audit proposals. If you want to, um, we've had. West Valley, to my knowledge, has had the same auditor here since before I came on, and that's Danny Downey and Associates. And they're local.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest changing at this point, um, you know, maybe. Maybe down the road when things are, are really settled out, but, um. I think they provided a lot of value through this last audit cycle, um. And I think there's just some consistency that we need, uh, with that review. They have just a, a, you know, good understanding of, you know, our books and I think there's just a lot of value in having, continuing with them. Um, for the near term, so I, I wouldn't suggest thinking about switching just for cost. I don't think anybody's gonna be notably any cheaper, you know, I think it's pretty standard what they're charging schools.
Well, and, and oftentimes you'll go with a different one and then they're coming in from billings or something like that, so then you're paying travel and lodging. Um, one fund I wanna point out to you guys is Fund Twenty-One, Compensated Absence Fund, and that starts on page thirty-six. And your ending fund balance in that fund is, um, six dollars and eighty-six cents. And what the compensated absence fund is used for is for classified. Individuals or the superintendent, and should they, uh, leave the district. And you've gotta pay them out termination pay, you can use this fund to do it with, and then it doesn't impact your general fund. But in order to fund this fund, you have to do it, it year-end with transfers from your general fund. So say you got to the end of a year and you had seventy-five thousand dollars. Sitting available in your general fund and, um. You can transfer some of that money into the comp absence fund to a maximum of thirty percent. Of what the total comp absence is for your classified and your superintendent. So we had, the board had a, um, had approved when I was still here. Or I am the superintendent to take a look at those year-end funds, and if there was some available. We, and I would run the numbers to see what our maximum would be, and then we could move that money into comp absence. And where, where I always tracked it was we had some individuals that were here for thirty years. That were, I knew that within a few years they would be retiring. Um, I would be retiring and then you had a superintendent leave a couple of years ago. And so instead of impacting that general fund with the amount to those term, the termination pay. We could go to the comp absence fund. And so, um, that's one I'd like to see when you can to build that up a little bit. Because in the long run, it, it will help you. And so that's something though that you won't get till to the spring of next year to even be able to take a peek at it. And then Mark will be able to take a, a real rough look at it, looking at the budget and say, well, you know, is it or isn't feasible? And we knew it wasn't feasible this year, so it wasn't even a discussion.
So is that something Cindy, that we could, we could say, um, you know, so-and-so is retiring in three years? So we can, we could start, you know, a couple of years early contributing to that. To kinda smooth out the, the budgetary impact? Or you have to do it? Okay, so you can kinda feel, you can build up the balance for future expenses, it doesn't have to fully be expended the next. Year, you can kinda smooth, that, that's a good idea to use, I agree. Especially because you have, you know, once we get to the point where we have. Fully, where we have full, fully funded general fund reserves. You know, or nearing that, you, you, so you can only have up to ten percent, and then you have to start kind of putting it in other funds. Potentially to kinda maybe utilize else, you know, elsewhere to smooth things out, so that's, that's a good one to, to make note of, definitely.
Yeah, and you're ma-, you're maximized to thirty percent of your total comp absence. Uh, numbers for your classified and your superintendent. And so, um, now with the software, um, I needed to have those figures for all staff. When I was doing the TFS and input that in here as well. But, um, you'd kinda break it down to see what would fit that fund and then, and then you could do that.
But we are operating, yeah. This has been something you didn't look at.
No, 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 um. And, you know, some of these others, you've got debt service, your building reserve, um. Inter-local Agreement Fund, do you guys understand what that inter-local agreement fund is? It's Fund Eighty-two on page forty-one.
Probably good to explain for some of the new people that are on.
Um, a few years back, uh, it was made available to districts to form inter-local agreements. And you have to have drawn up a very specific inter-local agreement. As to how the money can be used, who it would involve, this type of thing. You can have districts that, um, have inter-local agreements, uh, that have elementary and high school districts. And they can get to the, they can have their own inter-local agreement. So where they get to the end of a year, and then if they've got money left in their elementary or their high school. That they think it would be beneficial to put it in that inter-local agreement fund, they could do that. And I know like in Kalispell, they can do that. Um, you've got other, your other large districts that do that. This inter-local agreement fund is specific where it involves West Valley, Kyla, Marion. And Smith Valley Schools, and so, um. The money that has been transferred in from other schools, uh, can be pretty speci-, pretty significant. Um, what is in here in regards to West Valley, we earned some interest on it this year of, uh, two hundred and eleven dollars. Um, other districts, um, didn't transfer any in, in twenty-three like Smith Valley. They didn't send any money in where you've got others that did. And in often cases, um, it might be, uh, monies that would have been reverted to the state. But this gives them another avenue, kind of like a savings account. And that way, if they've got a big, you know, say they've had a big issue arise. They can come back and use this money to pay for that. You know, if it's windows or security doors or what have you in a district.
Is that different from what we were just talking about, that, that classified, uh, the compensated absence fund? I understand that, that this would be a much wider savings account, this could be used for anything.
But only for the schools that have put money into it. So West Valley can't use any money that they don't have in here and take from any of these other schools. So this fund is, um. We are, or West Valley is the financial person basically to monitor this fund. For these schools, but it's an agreement that was made with these four schools. To help them with another avenue of, of, uh, like I say, kind of a savings account, okay?
Do we get compensated for that?
No.
We just do it out of the goodness of our heart?
It's an advantage for West Valley if we can, if we have money to put into it.
Sure.
And we, but we did not.
So Cindy, would, like, in general. Cause I think, like, like you said, I mean, you made the note there, so once your reserves are fully funded. Then you effectively have to just return any excess. You know, if you ran a general fund surplus, you'd have to return that back to the state.
Only in.
You know, unless you.
Only certain monies and in certain cases, yes.
Okay, but you could use, you, once you get to that point, so would you suggest, obviously with us, we took, you know, the hundred and ninety-eight thousand out. So we have, we have to start building that back up, would you suggest that we try to just build back up our general fund reserves? You know, up to, you know, that ten percent and then start looking at these, these other funds? After that, or would you suggest kind, yeah, okay, I, that's what I, I was thinking, so. These are kinda things, like, once we can get those general fund reserves restored, then we can start utilizing these other funds. As savings opportunities. To create budgetary flexibility, you know, after that point, okay?
And that, that's because the general fund reserves impact our ability to effectively bond.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, but like these would be a great one with the tech breaking down, having something else to go to for the tech piece or the HVAC system.
Yep, exactly.
Yep, yep, so, um. Yeah, Fund Eighty-four is the student extracurricular activities that we put in there. Um, we've got a, what's called a private purpose trust, Fund Eighty-five. And that is a scholarship that we have had in place for several years. That a family has put in memory of their child that was killed out here. And so, um, there's money sitting in there, uh, and it's my understanding, there's a scholarship. That was awarded that will, um, start the paid out this year for that youngster, so.
For that, for them to fund. The money they would ordinarily have to put in to be in the extracurricular activity. I mean, like, the money they have to spend to play football.
Student Extracurricular Activities Fund, page forty-two is different.
Okay.
From the Fund Private Purpose Trust.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, there are two different funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Yeah.
One of these like post-secondary scholarships that they're wanting?
It's for any, any graduating senior that has gone through West Valley School.
Okay.
And, um, they have the opportunity to apply for this scholarship. And then we've had staff members that have been on that committee.
Yeah, okay.
Um, to award that scholarship. Yeah.
So that's two of the high schools.
And then the following pages are things that, um, OPI asked for as far as detail expenditures. Uh, in different areas like special ed, for instance, and then if we, um, you know, the amount we have to spend locally. Um, to not have to revert money to the state and we, we spend way more money than we have to look at. For, uh, any kind of reversion. So, um, then you're, there's a fixed asset schedule in there, and so anything that is. And so anything that is um, in the seven hundred object codes uh, here for an over uh, five thousand dollars, we have to put on our fixed asset schedule. So we've got, you know, our buildings, machinery such as um, tractor, uh, those types of things in there, the, the e-buses in there. We had some uh, building improvements in regards to some concrete slabs. The shop that's now gone from construction in progress into an addition on there for this year. So um, and then um, here in the schedule changes and long-term liabilities, I spoke to needing the compensated absences of the whole district. Um, those go in there and it shows where it was beginning the prior year, what our additions are and where we're ending. And we have to show these along with our um, uh, TRS and PERS. Our bond is in there. So um, yeah, all those things are reportable. And that bond came on in February of twenty fourteen. And the next page is the net pension liabilities for both PERS and TRS. And the good thing is there were no errors when I was all said and done, because I wouldn't be able to submit if there was. There are um, just some warnings that are, don't prevent you from submitting. And these have been here from prior years. Um, so we will, they show warnings for the expenditure of the budget amendment in there, but that's all been taken care of, so. We are good to go on the trustee's financial summary. The next thing I had in your package was that apportionment of any cash balances. And I spoke to those um, in your balance sheet. And I'm just gonna quickly summarize that your general fund reserves are at five point two four percent of what your next year's budget, proposed budget is, where it can be a max of ten. Your transportation reserves are sitting at eighteen point six nine, max of twenty. Your retirement reserves are right at twenty. Adult ed, you can have up to thirty-five percent, those are at thirty-two eighty-two. And then your uh, debt service, right now you're sitting with a thirty-one point four percent of budget. So those are looking pretty good there. So, once you've uh, taken action on this, then um, we'll get this down to the county tomorrow along with um, the submitted and signed TFS and budget. Um, one thing, this budget report is what it is and it shows you the different levies. Um, I did not change my header on this, I was trying to get this to you guys uh, as soon as I could today. So this is budget year have wide twenty, twenty-four. Can you tell when I did it last?
And the names will change.
Yeah, and so um, anyway, this is a good summary you to have, I think. And the board, the last few years um, I was here, the board really liked this document to compare your budgets. And so your general fund budget is going to go up about sixteen thousand dollars. Um, your property tax is going to drop on your general fund. The mill levies, um, because our taxable value has gone up ten thousand dollars over last year. Um, the mill levy is going to go down about two and a half percent from the year before. And so um, with a, a proposed budget of five million fifty-seven thousand five hundred and fourteen point eight seven, your transportation budget is going up roughly thirty thousand. And that, the millage on that is about point eight increase on that. And so that adopt proposed budget would be six hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and fifteen twenty-six. Bust depreciation fund, um, that fund is going up about six thousand dollars. And property taxes will go down on that. Your mills drop by point oh four, so it is a slight increase. I was able to reappropriate some money uh, into the new budget by just over sixteen thousand dollars. So bust depreciation would be twenty-eight thousand nine eighty-four eighty-six. And you can use that um, say to purchase, if you had to purchase new uh, radios or something like that, you could use bust depreciation. Um, tuition fund, we pay um, tuition to the Flat and Special Ed preschool on students uh, that are from West Valley that attend there. We also pay tuition on uh, other special needs students that go to the Crossroads Program over at Evergreen. And then um, we are able to um, use this fund pay for some of our aid salaries specific to those people that are working one-on-one with certain students. So that adopted budget is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand four sixty-five thirty-nine. And that has gone up about three mills. So it is jumping a little bit in um, from last year, last year. Um, so we're jumping about forty-two thousand on that. The retirement fund has uh, gone down a little bit. Uh, and this retirement fund takes into account all of your staff and the cost for retire, your PRS, TRS, uh, FICA. Um, what am I missing? FICA? No, unemployment, so there.
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp would be on, in your other fund.
That's insurance.
Yeah, but it's, it wouldn't be coming out of the retirement fund. Um, your healthcare doesn't come out of there either. And it's based upon, it's based upon the wages of each individual. And so um, you've had some retirements. And so when this was calculated, it came in around twenty-nine thousand dollars less as part of a county permissive levy. And so this will be taken to the county commissioners. We were able to reappropriate just shy of thirty-three thousand dollars to fund that budget. And uh, so in your, um, to do that, if, we've got a few less mu- uh, dollars in the reserves, but it's also capped. So um, so there you go. The adult ed is a couple thousand dollars less than it was the year before in looking at the needs of the district and what you're using that for. It didn't appear that it needed to go up at all um, from what was shared. So that's eleven thousand seven ninety-eight eighty-seven. Um, the, there are no mills levied for that. No mills levied for technology. We get, we've got a uh, fund balance that was re-appropriated. And then we get a little more money from the state on that. And so uh, we, we are allowed, uh, let me see, we re-appropriated five thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars to fund that budget. Flex fund, um, that had appropriated all of that because that's your prior year balance of ten thousand three oh five eighty. Um, we could, they put money into the flex fund that might be from the credit card rebate, that type of thing. We'd go in to fund that. The building reserve, that fund is a permissive levy that was put into effect a few years ago with the state. And so there is a state formula that calculates that so that you would get the max from the state um, along with some from the local taxpayer. And so there's a ceiling on what we can do there. And uh, that budget went up eighteen thousand dollars. And so the property tax went up fourteen hundred dollars. Um, and the mill went up point oh nine in the mill. So we've uh, we re-appropriated a large amount from last year's budget. So just over sixty-eight thousand was re-appropriated to fund this, which was great. So um, the total in all funds is there six point nine five zero nine four three seven nine in your proposed budgets, your debt service budget. And that's uh, the state has all of our bond information and so that's pretty much auto-calculated. So that's five hundred and six thousand two eighty-seven. And we re-appropriated um, just over thirteen hundred and fifty dollars in there. So um, the mills actually, all told, the mills for debt service dropped from fifty-one point five one to forty-four point three nine. Your overall mills went from last year at one oh six point three three to one oh seven point six. So they went up not, not eve- you know, just over a mil. So that's pretty good, that's pretty good. So, any questions?
One thing when I look at this, we say, okay, basically this is taking a max budget that we can get or that are spent, right? So that's how we balance these things. We really spent five point two million last year out of, out of the general fund. When you look at this, what has to feel different for this group in the coming, where does that two hundred thousand come from?
Well, it comes from not filling vacant positions primarily. It comes from cutting where you can. Um, because you can't, you can't go back to those reserves. So you basically have to make up two hundred thousand dollars. And you've done that to a degree with some of your vacant positions that you have not filled, both certified and classified. Um, I think that you need to be thoughtful um, moving forward in the folks that you're hiring. I know we, we, I'd expect nothing less than we look at the best person for the job. But I also have, we also have to consider where they hit on the salary schedule. And I, I know that that isn't a popular thing and it's hard for people to hear, but it's something we have to consider. And so this is going to be a very tight budget to work in this year. Where we are doing everything we can in this. And um, I think we've made some great strides, but it's just got to be tightly followed. There is, there's absolutely no fluff, you know? Yeah.
So if eighty-nine, ninety percent of the GF is salaries for teachers, it really comes down to positions. What you're paying, what ones are filled and not filled and what you're paying to fill.
Yes.
That's it, okay.
Yeah.
That's, so I'll try and be a bit of a gatekeeper on that and so be productively challenging trying to raise. I go, oh, we, we're used to having these folks. Can we do without them? Otherwise, we're gonna pass that, that is what's gonna happen, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And just really making a, you know, maybe checking, I don't know if we are checking years, it's gonna make sure that they're coming in. You know, if they say thirteen, like is anybody checking that to make sure that we're starting them out in the right area?
Well, the OPI website has, has teachers file that where, so there's another way we can check that rather than just go off resumes and, and, and calling people. Um, there officially, you're supposed to go back to your, where you've taught before and get letters, document your, your experience. So that's something we could look at doing.
And having that info on the hires is super helpful.
Yeah, for teaching positions.
So in terms of paper, supplies, professional development, I mean, these are the things that get us in a pickle throughout the year. Potential, I mean, on a budget this tight.
Yeah.
Like, it's not gonna be any different than a family that lives paycheck to paycheck, the little things get you.
Yeah.
What do we, is it, should we go over that at some point? Like and kind of dive into like what that looks like and how we approve?
Well.
How do we prevent going over?
I think that right now you need to put, you need to put a hold on spending. You need to put a hold on any, any spending moving forward. It's got to be scrutinized and that's where, you know, your, your business official is gonna take a good look at that to know where it fits in the budget and what the need is. And some things maybe come into the school board. But I think that, that the word no has to be heard around here. And, and it's, it, it's just the state of facts is what it is. I saw a few POs already in the system that are in there. And um, you know, we've got to see, okay, where are you paying this from? Because this general fund cannot absorb it all, it just can't. And so maybe you're able to look, you know, is this, is this a general fund expense? Is this an extracurricular expense? So does it need to hit, is it over here on the extracurricular side? Um, you're gonna have a little money once uh, if, you know, we've got anticipated. I believe Brooke had fifty-seven out of district kids on that agenda the other night. And so we need forty-five thousand dollars to fund this general fund. So the difference that comes in between that forty-five thousand and then the overall, we will be putting that into its own fund and then that has to be spent within this year. And so that's where we will be looking to, to pay for the paper. You will have, and it's my understanding, they're not doing the county paper order anymore. They're kind of ordering on it as needed um, through an office supply store. And so that's been working out and they found that there was savings in that. So um, you know, people are just gonna have to be mindful. And what can you not? And we've been down this road before, I know Richard and Tina remember this, where, I mean, we were closely monitoring what was coming out of that printer and what people weren't collecting. And, you know, you don't want to have to be the gatekeeper on that. But I think folks just need to be reminded. And, and I know enough of these folks have been in these meetings that they have heard it multiple times over the last few months. So they know, they know.
What I'd, I'd just like to add, I mean, I, it's a, it's a great point for managing this, this current year. But on the horizon, we have, you know, a potentially, you know, a large opportunity to kind of alleviate a lot of this budget pressure through that general fund levy. And so it just like reiterates the importance of us kind of starting to, you know, as, as Laurel kind of noted before, it's like to really start like, building a really strong like marketing plan and kind of effort to, to get that to pass. Cause you know, you can't, you know, we can't sustain ourselves in this type of scenario long-term. And so it's, it's basically, you get to the end of this fiscal year, it's gonna be tight this fiscal year. I just don't want people to be overly pessimistic about the financial, the longer-term financial condition of, of the district. It's like, so, okay, yeah, we're, we're in a transitionary period, kind of coming out of these Esther funds where kind of, you know, we were, basically we created fixed expenses with, you know, temporary revenue. And we're having to roll out of that. But we've, we've rolled out through this year to a point where at least we can balance the budget, which is a, a great stride. We'll run that general fund levy. If it passes, great, then we can have some more budgetary flexibility. If it doesn't, you know, uh, and the next step, I think, is, is the combination of continuing to be frugal but also just recognizing that we're gonna have to adjust maybe that, that class size expectation and that uh, additional elective expectation that, you know, we've been able to provide in the past. And we'll have to kind of, kind of right-size our, our expenditures to a, a smaller budget. Um, which, you know, that, that's not a fun scenario, but it, it, it's just right sizing to kind of get yourself back under, you know, uh, it, back into kind of the right financial condition so we can, so we can have some budgetary flexibility. Um, so I think there's, I think there's some good things on the horizon for us. And it's not all that we're just gonna have to live in this budget crisis for, you know, for, into perpetuity. I think we have a good plan going forward. Um, needs a lot of work, but I think we have the plan, or at least we know what we need to do going forward.
I agree with that, the only thing. I agree with that. The only thing that I'm wondering though is, I mean, we renew contracts in April. So how does that look? Like if we, if we're running a levy in May, most likely. We have to figure out contracts in April. What does that look like?
Well, you're gonna have a plan B is what you're gonna have. And you're going to, you're gonna be sending, you're gonna have a plan that if the levy does fail, how are you moving forward? And if that means that there's gonna be some staffing cuts, then you're gonna have to prepare for that and have letters ready and made available to those individuals. That pending, you know, approval or passage of a levy, your position is, is kind of on the chopping block here. So you're gonna have to drill down, look at all of that. And I, I think that's what, I know Jeff has said this before um in past meetings of, of having to look at that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and then that's, and that's, Laurel, that's, I mean, we'll have to, you know, yeah, we can renew the vast majority of the contracts in April. But like, I mean, just like Cindy said, we'll probably have to hold some back, you know, pending that, that levy approval. And I think it's respect.
You would do your requires in May is when you would do that.
Okay.
Um, so you would potentially, your election will happen prior to the May board meeting.
Okay.
And so you will have a plan though, and, and so you should start talking about that plan not far after the first of the year and, and get that pa- plan put in place. Should be thinking then.
Well, and, and another, another thing to think about too is just to be mindful of just natural attrition through this year. And just, you know, if, if there is any opportunity that we can, that we can, you know, forecast retirements or staffing changes and just ha- and, and just kind of pencil those in and try to not, not maybe refill. Um, if we can, you know, I think that's, obviously that's the much more kind of, that's the much easier way to right size your budget rather than having to not renew a contract.
We're not gonna be insured that forty five thousand that you're talking about, Kitty. But we, we know we're gonna be short that.
Yeah.
Right? So we, and we talk about this in January, February, we know that, that that's we're gonna have to do something about that. And that's what you're talking about. That's our paper supply, Kitty. And that will go away because of the legislature, right?
Yeah, and at this point, that's all just kind of, you don't know what your numbers are gonna be once this year shakes out. Because they're gonna, they're gonna look at those tuition reimbursements next fiscal year based upon how it looked this year. So um there will be more coming out this year as far as how OPI is gonna handle that, that. And um, and the formula that's gonna be used. And then this next spring, districts will be able, they will start giving you some um pre uh what I wanna call it. Like a preliminary budget projective, projection. And so you will be able to see some of those numbers and then you'll be able to know moving forward how that's gonna look. Um, will it be more than what you take in at eleven hundred a kid now or less? I'm thinking it might be less per kid than eleven hundred. So it'll be hard to say depending upon the district they're coming from.
Right.
And how that works with where our district calculation is.
That seems so unethical.
It is. But the forty five thousand, we have spent, that's already budgeted in here.
This year.
Yeah.
We, we know, I, I just think when we get together and start in January, start saying, okay, what's our plan B? We're gonna have to probably eliminate that little kitty, cause that will be there for the coming year.
Yeah, well, it'll, it'll be interesting how that will roll into our um preliminary budget figures.
I mean, on supplies and stuff for this year, there's like art classes. I mean, do we have any kind of art supply fee or science fee?
So right now we have, in, in the elementary, I can't speak to the middle school, but we have a um art special in K one. We've essentially done it entirely by donations, whether that was last year's classroom teachers who didn't know budget. Um, Alexa put together the wishlist on Amazon that she sent out and people have been purchasing things for her. Um, so that's been pretty nice. There's been a huge turnout for that. But I think we are gonna have to start looking at some of that with fees.
Just for the supply issue that we're up against right now, cause none of that is factored in here and there's no, we're up.
Right. Yeah.
No. I looked at staff, I could see staff boxes today and they got a couple pads of sticky notes and what else were in there, maybe some pens or pencils.
Expo markers.
Yeah. Yeah. So there, there won't be coming in, putting your fingers in the supply box and taking things.
Maybe wanna highlight that adopted classroom group on Facebook and in our school newsletter. Hey, if you wanna support a program on classroom, check out this group on Facebook, just to
Yeah, I haven't seen the, I've seen the, the teachers, but I haven't seen whatever you were just talking about.
Yeah, I'll see it though.
Oh, Alexa, it's, it's in the same one. Yeah, yeah. Cause she just did a thank you post on some supplies she got.
And then I guess the other thing would be just confirming, I know we had passed, we had done an extracurricular fee. So making sure that fee is covering whatever we needed to for those extracurricular activities.
So that does it for me unless you guys have any more questions on that. And it would just be up for um acceptance and approval. And then once that is done, then I will post those with OPI. We'll get signatures on them and get them down to the county tomorrow. Yeah, and then you're good to go.
Yeah, we haven't. I don't think he's saying.
I'll make a motion to accept and approve the trustee financial summary cash balances and FY twenty four budget.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
On discussion, if it's related to this piece.
Yeah. Okay, if it's related to this agenda, I don't.
Do we vote?
Did everyone give a discussion?
It's related to the agenda of the budget, basically. It's really, really, I, I think you should really um help the teachers out. There's a lot of grants out there that the teachers can apply for themselves. That um put together comprehensive lists of grant uh potential um funding sources that the teachers individually, and that's how these grants are awarded, can apply for and um get funds. And so if the teacher has a need, um they can apply to get supplemental funding so that they can improve their uh thing. Now, the drinking fountain out here was a um funded by the grant that one of your teachers went after. She subsequently left, but the water fountain's still there, but she applied as a teacher for something that benefited the school. And um there's a bunch of those out there. And I think um you do well to research the opportunities out there. And so, you know, the teachers don't necessarily take it on the head by your budget restrictions and such. They can actually proactively go out there and uh bring more money in that relieves the overall stresses on the students and them, themselves. Plus they get the benefit of, hey, I got money, you know, from a grant. And um the other schools are aware of this, somewhat aware of this, cause we worked with all the other schools. And the teachers are telling us, hey, I applied for a five hundred dollar grant uh for STEM stuff. And I got it. And I've got this three D printing machine over here and the supplies for it and everything. And they feel pretty good. And then they get kudos from the administration because they brought in a capital asset, you know, for instruction, and it didn't cost the school district anything. So I think that's another approach to uh relieving the stress, financial stress. Is um in addition to giving the bad news, you know, to the teachers and everything. You know, here's an opportunity though to kind of relieve that. So just thought I'd throw that out as something you guys should consider.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Okay. Is there any for the discussion on this? All right, all those in favor of accepting the trustee's financial summary cash balances of FY twenty four budget? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Aye, passed unanimously.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion?
Real fast, so Jeff did the minutes from last time. That we circulated the minutes. You and I need to sign this afterwards, sign that they're approved. Just want to make sure that everyone's review of the minutes that he did in circle electronically.
But they're not noted on the agenda.
Yeah.
The regular meeting, the regular meeting.
Okay.
Adjourn that was at five twenty three.
All right, all those in favor of adjournment? Aye, opposed. Right, passed unanimously.
Yeah, remember, we sat down, we did the budget, you know, and you, you turned it on all of that.
Yeah, yeah.